All right, I'd like to call to order the March 11th, 2024, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Betcher?
Present.
Commissioner Landis?
Here.
Commissioner Stenson?
Present.
Commissioner Morgan?
Present.
Let it be known that Commissioner Thompson is not here, and Vice Chair Harrison has requested an excusal from tonight's meeting.
Would anybody like to make a Morgan, uh, motion to excuse Commissioner Harrison?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Harrison?
I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. It looks like that motion carries. We got item number three, approval of the February 26th, 2024, meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? That's what it says on there. Yeah, 26th. Not hearing or seeing anything from anybody in person. How about online? Neither of our remote commissioners? Any changes or corrections? Okay, not hearing or seeing anything? We'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. So item number four, a public comment. Um, do we have anybody who would like to make public comment tonight?
Dale Jeremiah, resident of Mount Lake Terrace, would like to make comment.
All right. Boot housing? Okay. Go ahead and, yeah, step up to the microphone there. And before you start, I, we have a new script that we have to go off of, so I just need to read it, so bear with me here. So, public comment. "No person shall make personal tax or threatening remarks while addressing the planning commission, which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes an orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person who is engaged in the conduct that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the business of the planning commission, or whose comments have been ruled out of order by the presiding officer, shall immediately cease and refrain from further improper comments or inappropriate conduct. All hate speech will be construed as threatening remarks." Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dale Jeremiah, and I live in Mount Lake Terrace, and I wanted to speak briefly about homeownership. So, I think that, oh, you're talking about housing, that homeownership should be a high priority, and so that should be a goal. And so, I've got three policy items that would encourage homeownership, and the first one is promote the multifamily housing property tax exemption program to include owner occupancy. And in the RCW 8414010, paragraph 12, it specifically mentions home occupancy, so apparently there is provisions for that. Last year, the city council did approve that program for rental property in the town center, but not citywide, so we need to have a, have it citywide for owner occupancy. Uh, then, the next thing would be to promote owner occupancy, multifamily development, where the city would provide all the infrastructure improvements, underground utilities, sidewalks, streets, whatever, because we need to promote owner occupancy, homeownership. Whereas now, I think, most places like Terrace Station, I think they paid for all of that street and all those improvements, but they're apartment buildings, and eventually they'll raise their rents and sell the place and raise their rents again. Uh, then the next thing would be property tax exemption. Now, this document shows up in your property tax statement every year about exemptions for low-income elderly that can get an exemption. Now, there are 76 exemptions for property tax, whether you're a church, or a cemetery, or some kind of a nonprofit. So, the third policy item would be to promote amending the state law RCW 8436 to allow for a five-year property tax exemption for first-time owners, homeowners. So, I mean, all these other people have exemptions, let's help the first-time homeowner somehow get some tax property relief. So, in concluding, if we can convert owner-occupant, single-family household neighborhoods to four- and five-story multifamily rental complexes, it will only increase the social-economic inequity in our country, and, and we might become a city of rental-only, no, no homeowners. Because, you know, like my neighborhood over by Mount Lake, by Ballenger Park, will get redeveloped, and there'll be five-story buildings there, and nobody, you know, they'll all be rentals. So, and everything I mentioned, I brought copies for staff, so, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you had any, I hope.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Yeah, you said if you had items for staff.
Yeah, I brought it all. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Jeremiah.
All right, let the record show that there is no other public in attendance tonight. Is there anybody who had registered in advance to speak online?
There is no one in the online audience who has registered in advance to speak.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, comp plan update.
All right, good evening, Chair Batista, members of the planning commission. My name is Jonathan Morales, senior planner at the city of Mount Lake Terrace, joined today with Ciara Carson, our consultant from OTAC, Emily Larson, also from OTAC, David Fisk from Leland Consulting Group, and Kristy Osborne, CD Director. I'm going to share my screen. So today, we're holding another planning commission briefing on the Vision 2044 Comprehensive Plan Update. The focus of today's meeting is to review planning commission comments on the land use and housing element policy, policies. Um, so first, we'll do a recap of the March 6 CPAC meeting. Um, secondly, go through a discussion of the land use and housing goals and policies. Uh, so we're designating about one hour for that discussion. Um, that's 30 minutes per element. Um, then we have an introduction to the environment and recreation parks and open space policy concepts, and then a few updates on engagement. So on March 6, we held our CPAC meeting. Um, so some highlights of this meeting was that we gave an update on future engagement activities, especially around spring engagement that we're planning for, mainly open house on March 26. So, we have some, some, a slide on that, um, towards the end of this slide deck. Then we gave an update on city council and planning commission meetings and what we've discussed thus far with these bodies, so specifically around the vision statement, alternatives, development process, um, and what they preferred vision statement was. With city council, um, the recommendation to move forward with the growth alternatives. We notified CPAC of that, and then we facilitated a workshop to gather feedback on the draft of Recreation Parks and Open Space and Environment Element Goal and Policy Concepts. So, um, on the side here is a, is an example of the activity we did with a, a dot matrix activity, um, and we asked advisory group members to provide comments and suggestions. So, overall, um, there was some broad support of the goals and policy concepts that were presented. Um, we did have some suggestions and some additional questions, wanting more clarity, so we're working on reframing those policy concepts so that by the time it gets to you, there's more clarity involved, um, and more confirmation. Um, did you have anything, Ciara, to add on CPAC? No. Um, I, I think one of the, the main things was more clarity on the implementation of some of the items, and how would we, um, activate parks, how do we prioritize some of the things that were proposed, equitable engagement, and then enhancement of public safety from, in parks and open space was something mentioned as well. So, those are just some highlights. Okay, now into land use and housing. So to start our discussion on land use and housing, again, so we are taking these through a three-step process where we're introducing element goals and policies at the first meeting. Uh, this is at the conceptual level. And then in the second meeting, we're distributing the formal policy statements, so that's that packet that you all get to provide comments on. And then at the third meeting, which is today, for land use and housing, it's discussing your comments and providing additional feedback and expanding on some of the comments you've provided in the, the worksheets. So to start with the land use element, we did our best to synthesize what, what was stated. So, some of the high-level comments for land use, um, so what is the right word for allowing higher densities close to frequent transit? Should it be consider or be more directive? So, um, this is speaking to the words we use, the verbs. Are we allowing, are we considering, encouraging? So, be more strategic in the words that we use. That's what I took from that. Uh, coordinating with neighboring jurisdictions should not preclude the city from zoning more intense density uses and activities. So that was related to, uh, policies related to jurisdictional, um, relations and, and collaboration.
That was my comment.
Third, further discussion on how to incentivize and be innovative in meeting the goal of quality design. Um, so that's speaking to design standards without creating barriers to development. So looking at how we can better regulate design and development, and also, um, how do we determine what is quality design, was the comment. Fourth, look at employment and living opportunities and commercial cores outside of town center. So also looking at our commercial nodes that we've identified and those neighborhood, um, opportunities. And what is the impact of lot consolidation, larger development versus infill development on smaller lots? So, um, there was some, some feedback on encouraging lot consolidation to facilitate larger development versus facilitating more infill, smaller lot development. Um, so that was interesting. Um, okay, a couple more. So discourage surface parking and encourage placemaking on private and public property, and mitigate impacts to historically, historic marginalized communities while also strengthening these communities. Um, some comments where it was determined that more context is needed, so clarify how the city can impact food access policy. Um, are we saying we want more grocery stores? Uh, what other ways are we trying to implement this? And then, what is the Snohomish County Tomorrow process? Um, so that was a comment. And I can just say, Snohomish County Tomorrow is a, sort of, all the representatives of cities in Snohomish County who work together to collaborate on county-wide planning policies. Um, anything else on that?
County, it's all under the guise of the Growth Management Act, so regional planning efforts, county-wide planning policies, buildable lands analysis, all those things that, um, kind of, the, I call it the sausage making before you start your comp plan. So, the work that's been done over the last two or three years prior to even get us to this point where we start addressing comprehensive planning. So that's a group, that's an ongoing group that meets, and there are staff that are part of Snohomish County Tomorrow, and then there's also an elected official group as well.
They also do the, um, future growth boundaries of the cities, right?
Yep, and, yep, the growth boundaries in conjunction with Puget Sound Regional Council and those determinations, yep.
One, South County City's overambitious idea of what should be their city kind of caused that years ago, so.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and just.
It's part of the fund of growth management.
In addition to the cities, also the Talalup tribes are a member of that as well.
Yeah.
Um, and then how's the transfer development rights and LCLIP? So that's land, land, actually, what is that?
LCLIP.
Yes. That is landscape conservation, uh, local improvement program, I believe. Um, and LCLIP, how's that applicable to Mount Lake Terrace? And then there was a comment that that could be used for allowing density bonuses. Um, so we do have a transfer of development rights program in our code, MTMC 1840. Uh, from what I understand, that has not really been implemented as much on projects, um, but we can further explore that through this, um, policy review process, um, if it's worth keeping, um, to, to facilitate further development.
I'd be curious.
And also preservation of, of natural areas as well.
I, I mean, obviously, I was on the planning commission when we came, you know, when we, when we put that in, um, but we put that in kind of around the time of the last big economic downturn as well. Um, so it's kind of curious, as you guys, you know, kind of dig in deeper, if, if you're able to find out why nobody has taken advantage of it, or is it just, people aren't looking at, you know, maybe preserving open space in a different part of the county and apply, you know, applying that, that density option, you know, here, maybe, you know, maybe there's just not the connection, or, be curious to see, because we, we kind of thought that it would have a little bit of traction when we.
Yeah, we can get the numbers. I, I think TDR programs historically in the state don't work, um, and jurisdictions adopted them over the last 20, 30 years. They're used very little. Um, the development community doesn't really like to use them because it's a lot of work, um, for what they, what they see as little benefit of doing, um, LCLIP or the TDR program, so they don't really get used. I think the thought process was probably good at one time. Um, I think once growth management started to occur, and there was some flexibility to develop in the counties a little bit more, um, that, um, we didn't, we didn't really see that program turn out how I think a lot of people envisioned that it could. But that doesn't mean that there's maybe not some successful examples. I'm not aware of any, but, I mean, we can certainly do some digging to see if there's some strategies that work a little bit better elsewhere.
Are there, are there any costs to just keeping it on the books, just in case we get interested?
I mean, it, it's on the books now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, there, that's no harm to, to keep the program.
But we're most likely going to get more traction on local, uh, density bonus enticement, you know, provide a public pause, and we'll let you go another floor up, or give us more space so we can do more in the, you know.
Sure.
In the right of way.
Yeah.
Allow something, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, just for the record, uh, so, a definition of LCLIP. So the Landscape Conservation and Local Infrastructure Program provides a financial incentive for cities to participate in TDR, um, in the TDR program, and can help pay for some more parks and other infrastructure. So that's from the PS, Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, so in terms of the housing element, again, there was feedback on, uh, the language. So, allow versus city will, do XYZ, um, so be more action-oriented. Zoning and siting requirements should be maintained for PSH, so that's permanent supportive housing and emergency housing and shelters. Uh, policies related to housing for special needs populations might be too vague. The city sit on a board or contribute to partner agencies, organizations. Um, and I can, uh, find out more about that. I'm not entirely sure. Further discussion of the value of older housing stock versus preservation policies. Um, how does this impact the resiliency of existing housing stock, especially related to emergency preparedness and hazard mitigation? And then housing element 1.2, policy 1.2, uh, there was a suggestion that this be split into several different policies, to be more specific on how to produce affordable rental housing. Um, another comment, allow for innovation in housing development types. Uh, so being flexible in our definitions of what we mean by, um, uh, I believe that was in reference to middle housing, um, and include small lot development. So, some new topics where more context is needed. So new policies related to economic integration and spectrum of housing security. That was a comment from one of the commissioners. Um, explore public-private partnerships and how, um, the city could be more strategic in, in facilitating that. Um, and exploring standardized accessory dwelling unit plans or pre-approved plans where, um, applicants could, could select from a set of approved plans, um, if they're interested in having an ADU on their property. Uh, clarify what affordable housing for all income level means. So we do have some guiding questions, and this is where we want to, uh, set aside about 30 minutes for housing and 30 minutes for land use. Um, is there one, an element that you would like to start with, for these other guiding questions we have?
Go ahead and open it up. Anybody have something there?
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know, I feel like I added a lot of, um, points to housing, but land use, like we've had for a while, so it kind of makes sense to start there, I think.
Okay, land use facilitates housing, so, let's do that. Uh, you want to lead discussion?
We decided, which one first?
Uh, land use.
Land use, all right. Um, so as we, so in our presentation here today, we did our best to synthesize, um, the comments we heard from all the planning commissioners. As you can tell, these are some pretty hefty packets here, um, and those were only two slides of information, so, um, we know we didn't grab everything. Um, we really just wanted to sort of give an overview of the high-level findings that, that we had heard from the comments that were given. Um, so we wanted to, to first of all, ask if there is any, um, if there's a planning commissioner who wants to clarify any of their comments that maybe you've seen on the screen here, maybe might have been missed, um, that you wanted to go back to for further conversation here tonight, um, and provide that additional direction, um, for the revisions in the element goals and policies. And then, sort of, you know, you had about a week to review the policy work, um, maybe an additional, um, you know, couple days to digest and sort of think through what the purpose of these elements are. So are there any other concepts or areas of focus that you did not see in the content, um, of the packet that you want to make sure gets incorporated, similarly to how we had those sort of list of new concepts to be included in housing? Um, where else can we beef up or expand upon, um, the content in the, in the element? So, um, I would open it up to, I guess, anyone who'd like to start, maybe on question number one.
Anybody have any?
Partial questions.
Yeah, so I feel like there were several, um, can we go back to the, uh, points that were in the land use element, maybe as kind of a guiding point? Thank you. So, um, I have some comments on this, or maybe points of discussion. Um, in my mind, it's, uh, the things that I heard were, um, consider or be more directive about, um, proximity to transit, and then, um, discussion on urban, or, you know, building quality and design standards. And then, um, one that I heard maybe wanted some more discussion, that might have, I feel like, just been my point, but maybe someone else made this, was like, do we want, um, you know, there's kind of this bias towards requiring lot consolidation, sort of that you can get, um, like, you know, enough land together so you can get the structured parking you need to put the density you require. Um, based on other areas in the region, I don't know if that is a completely reliable way of making sure we have sort of total build-out. I mean, it's going to be a component of it, but I think we also need to look in parallel at, um, things that make small lot development easier, like single-stair buildings or, um, parking minimum reductions or transfer of parking or something like that. Alternate strategies, like, you know, we don't have to solve it tonight, but I think it might be good to look at, because our, our plat is like, you know, not like a Bothell or a Kenmore, where they started to have these giant strip mall sites that they sold off, and, you know, it sort of works. Like, I think we're going to have to be a little bit more creative about some of the development, because we do have a lot of these little lots that are probably not going to sell all at once. And I think there's some opportunity there, too, to make different kinds of buildings, or smaller condominiums, or, um, little shops or things like that, that maybe don't necessarily pencil out when we see a momo culture, these sort of five-over-one buildings centered on a parking garage. I guess that's more of a statement. I don't know if anyone has. Any thoughts on that?
I would just add, I, I think where, you know, potential aggregation occurs, you know, is, you know, is important. Um, clearly, you know, we, the, we want to encourage, you know, probably the denser redevelopment, you know, on our main arterials or minor arterials, especially roads that, you know, have a bus going on it. Um, maybe, you know, kind of hold out for something of a larger scale there that can handle it. Um, whereas, you know, we'll probably see, you know, less of that and more just the infill development as, as you get off those main, those main strips. So I think it's, you know, it'd be kind of important to sort of distinguish the two. Um, I think the, the benefit for, you know, a larger scale, you know, like a five-over-one as well, is that depending on where the lot is or the aggregation occurs, it might offer the city the opportunity to better connect the street network as well. And that's, that's definitely important as we look at, um, you know, kind of these, not to, you know, not to jump around, but sort of the option three, for, for, you know, the long-range, you know, future planning.
Yeah.
Connectivity is going to need to be a big part of that, and, you know, we're, we're sort of blessed and cursed with the post-World War II suburban boom.
Mm-hmm.
Federally mandated, what's the preferred style of road network? And, you know, that's kind of limited us, you know, for decades, and, um, if we, you know, if, if we, if we think smartly about this and have the right policies on the books, we might be able to kind of kill two birds with one stone, you know. We can, we can off, you know, offer policies that are enticing for not only more commercial and residential development, but at the same time, create more, you know, create better access than we currently, you know, aren't, aren't able to do, so.
Does this kind of tie into, um, development standards as well, in your mind? Because in my mind, development standards also are like the thing that you described as well, like interconnectivity between buildings and making more of an urban fabric, as opposed to just, you know, buildings sitting on lots.
Yeah, yeah, you know, at a high level, definitely.
Yeah. Like, no building on the ground plane should be allowed to be more than 240 feet on one side, um, in an area where you're trying to walk around the blocks, because then it makes a block that is thought walkable. And you see this in Terrace Station, which, you know, I think is probably okay. It's in a valley. It's like, kind of a hybrid freeway transit development, so I think that's okay. But like, you know, in the town center or in some of these new areas, I think if you build a 500-foot-long building, it's going to start running into the problems that you're describing, where, like, it's, it's not really the sort of collection of urban spaces we want.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I mean, it's obviously, you go to, you know, you go to any neighborhood that's walkable, the blocks are going to be shorter. Um, and, you know, depending on which road you're looking at, there are some segments where there literally is a street, you know, like, there's 244th and 245th, or, you know, it's just, it's like, it's sequential, but then you get to other segments of that same street, and you're going, you know, 800 feet before you, before you hit a, a, an intersection. So it kind of, you know, when you have blocks that long, it kind of creates a, you know, a dead space. You need, you need something to entice that person to keep, you know, to keep walking, so it's, um.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would throw that in there.
So are, so town center was, um, divided up with additional streets to have roughly 300-foot blocks for just that purpose.
Mm-hmm.
So are you saying that you would like to see something like that, um, throughout the city?
I think so, yeah. Like, yeah, it sounds like my agreement. Like, I feel like a lot of, um, what the trend is for, like, design review and things like that is to, like, regulate, like, you know, is this color of brick appropriate, or should the facade be broken up in this much? But I think the bigger question is like, how But I think the bigger question is like, how do these buildings make urban space that all fits together? And you see good examples of this and bad examples of this around, like, I think the, like, townhouse developments that are created, for example, when they start facing each other, and you can kind of see this off of 55th, where we've got a new development going in, like, when those townhouses are like 10 feet apart on the property line, because they've sort of built up to the setback, like, that creates an urban space that is not particularly good. But if they had, like, you know, been able to do something different with outsourcing the parking, or something like that, so it's not completely taken up by driveways, maybe that would have created a, you know, more space where you have like, a better view from the townhouse or something, or you can walk in a more pleasant environment, like, I think it's really more about the buildings and kind of how they relate to the street, and how they relate to each other. In Linwood, for example, like, all the new buildings that are kind of going up on these big strip mall parcels, when these blocks that are like, you know, a quarter-mile-long, like, you know, they've just got walls facing each other with no active space in between, and that is like, you know, just basically, they extruded the strip mall up. And I think what we're looking for is more like relational to buildings on site, and then whatever the building is, like, you know, we should be planting trees in front of it anyways, so we shouldn't be able to look at it that much, so.
So where would you off-source parking to?
I don't know exactly, like, if there's some kind of transfer development rights for parking, or if like, you can get a credit for parking by replacing it with like, e-bike secured parking, or some kind of car share program in your building that's actively used by the residents, or, you know, there's probably a bunch of ideas. I know one person who built a building in a suburb here, and actually rents spaces from the adjacent, sort of five-over-one parking garage building next door, and so maybe there's like, some rental program or something, or the parking isn't necessarily located on-site, but like, if they have an agreement for parking somewhere else, that works out.
I think parking is, you know, kind of a tough subject to sort of tackle. Obviously, we want people to, you know, encourage people to, you know, walk, bike, take transit, but just given where we are located at in the region, you know, right now, you still kind of need a car to do a lot of things in, you know, in the future, maybe not so much, which is obviously the goal. So, you know, I think, I think in the near term, parking's still definitely going to be a necessity, but, you know, there's already discussions out there about, you know, designing parking in a way that it can be converted in the future. So obviously, we're talking about structured parking here, but, you know, do it so, you know, make sure that parking deck is flat, you can convert it to like basement units or something in the future when the demand for parking is, is low, but I think unless we, you know, there was a, a large enough development that had enough space to do parking where they could take on other, other properties need, you know, like on a rental base, or, you know, a lease base, that, that would be tough. You know, I've, you know, I've thought about that in the past, you know, it's like, okay, what, like, you know, for this, like, the town core, like, you know, we have a lot of commercial development, it's like, similar to the same concept, kind of like what you see in West Seattle, where the businesses have kind of a shared lot that they got together, and it's not, you know, the city doesn't own it, but it's, it's privately run, but it's a lot for everybody to use, you know, some, something, you know, similar, but it costs money, and a lot of land, so.
And if you had some kind of like, market-based, you know, collect, if you like, collectivized all the parking in Town Center and assigned a value to it, like, that might actually provide several advantages, like, it might, you know, ascribe a value to like, all the park-and-ride parking we have, for example, for commercial spaces or whatever, or if there was some way of facilitating rental spaces of unused parking in adjacent buildings, maybe that would be another way to do it. You know, there's probably a bunch of ways to do it, I think, but the fundamental problem is like, cars are big and hard to move around on lots, they sort of break small lot development. Like, if you were to put four houses on a single lot, like, you'd have to figure out how, like, if each of those needed their own garage, you would have to figure out, like, how to move the cars all the way across the lot. And so like, that is sort of the thing that prob, well, people talk about single stair, but like, more than that, like, parking is probably the thing that breaks smaller lot developments. And then, the conflict between wanting retail on the ground floor, and then like, it's also cheapest to put all the parking on the ground floor, like, that, those are the sort of the two things that break, like, those are, those are, those are the sort of the two things that break a lot of what we're seeing, and we probably need some solution. And so, I don't know if parking should be a comprehensive plan element, or if we can more, we maybe more allude to it in like, you know, urban design standards, or whatever.
Well, I know there's some parking elements in our design standards.
Which goes back to not putting all the parking on the ground, I think, yeah.
Well, and I'm thinking like, how, how it's, how it's shaded and fenced, too, you know? Of course, I'm going back to, to like, design standards that may or may not even be on the books anymore, because we've made so many changes over the years, but, yeah, I mean, I guess the question would be for staff, where would that most, where would the most appropriate place for that be? Would, is that a land use policy, is that a housing?
Well, for now, under the comp plan, I think you, you would have goals and policy language, and then the actual standards would be in the development code. So right now, we have parking, parking standards in the municipal code, and we also have separate parking standards for Town Center, that are applicable to Town Center, trying to eliminate a lot of that ground-level parking, where, you know, you have big parking lots, or parking adjacent to the pedestrian way, so you would have housing or business along there with parking internal or underground, right, instead of a lot, or street parking. So trying to maximize having street parking where you can, for people to park cars as well, for business opportunities and just other parking. So I think you'll, we'll be seeing, as far as development regulations, parking in the requirement as we tackle new housing requirements is going to be very sparse, and I think we're, we're going to see more and more of that even right now. So, for instance, in our code, if you have a town home, 1,500 square feet or less, it requires one parking space, well, typically, probably going to find that most people have more than one vehicle. So we're trying to keep it spare right now, just to allow for more housing, but I think what we're going to see is, the way we develop right now with the densities that are required, there's not going to be a lot of parking that's going to be required. There's just no way you're going to fit the densities and all the parking on for infill or even consolidating lots. It's, it's going to be tough, so.
I kind of envision where the potential for it to be maybe a little bit more successful is, where you're not looking at a single building with its own lot underneath, but like, a complex of buildings that share a garage, kind of like the Vitamilk site in Green Lake.
Right.
Thornton Creek in, in, in Northgate, where, you know, on the surface, it looks like it's multiple buildings, but it was, you know, it was kind of all developed cohesively at once, and they share one lot underneath between the commercial and the, you know, and the residential. There's enough, when you look at it at that scale, then there is enough space to actually provide that parking, but yeah, the individual units being built, it's, it'll be very tough to, to get that to work, at least, you know, in a, in a, in a structured fashion. I keep thinking about, the, I don't, I don't even know what the name of it is, it's the new apartments that are just north of Albertson's, that's still technically unincorporated Snoomish County, so that actually fell under Snoomish County's Urban Center Design Review Board. It's the only meeting I've ever missed, which was probably good, because I wouldn't have had anything good to say. But there is a good example of, you know, county codes require less parking now for, you know, these types of developments, in, in the hope that people will use transit, but the reality is, people still have multiple cars. If you go to the Albertsons at night, and it's much more easy to see now that grocery stores aren't open 24 hours, so you know these cars aren't employees or shoppers, and you go by there at the middle of the night, and between the two different sides of that complex, there's at least 40 cars. That's overflow from the apartment complex that's parking there, so, you know, it just kind of gets back to that, you know, we'd like to be in a car reduction mindset, and, you know, everybody uses alternative modes of transportation, but the reality is, is we're just, we're not there yet, and that's, that's kind of the risk you take when you have, when you aren't requiring the parking on-site, you know, the right-of-way can absorb some, but it can't absorb all of it, especially if the whole street is, you know, being developed in that, in that standard, so it's just, wish it wasn't the case, but it is. That's, that, I know that's, at least one city council member has mentioned that on and off over the years as well, it's just like, we're just not there yet.
Should build 4,000 parking car stall garages along the interstate, and everyone parks their car there, and nobody has their car in town, and you just take a bus to your car? I mean, saying this is a bit of a joke, but like, I think a transitional step is the idea that like, you don't just open your door, and then there is your car, like, your car kind of has a home somewhere else, and, you know, the problem is finding a home for it.
Yeah.
But that home doesn't necessarily have to be where your home is. And so I think what parking minimums sort of do is try to tie those things together, but looking at it more of as a district or something, sort of lets those two things float independently. And then, it's like a role about like, what the car is in somebody's life, right? Like, it's not that thing that you, every time you leave your house, you get into it. Like, we're trying to, we, we don't have the space for people to do that, really, right? Like, we kind of have to move away from that a bit, and that's why we're making these mixed-use places in areas that are near transit, and so like, if you are near transit, and, you know, the Albertson's site, I feel like, is kind of on its way to being near transit, but it's just not there at the moment, and, you know, people like, need cars for their jobs, too, right? So like, you know, there are different, definitely different kinds, kinds of jobs, or you take your car home at night and then go, because you're storing tools in there, or whatever. But I think requiring that every apartment has those two things stapled together is probably one of those things that makes developments less possible, while also kind of making traffic worse, and like, we kind of need an alternative, but it doesn't necessarily have to be no cars, it just has to be, I don't, I don't, if it were easy, we would have solved it, so.
I just want to do a quick time check, we're about 20 minutes into this discussion here, and I think it's been a great one, but I just wanted to, to let you know, in case there were any other topics on land use we wanted to talk about tonight, if we wanted to continue on this thought.
Oh, I'm fine for now.
Yeah, I feel like those 20 minutes were spent on the probably two most things I care about, which are lot, no, lot size and urban space, but they're all like, the, the secret hand that guides them is parking.
Anybody else? Have to remember to also check with our online commissioners. Looks like we're good, then.
So as we continue, sort of talking through the land use element, were there any other of the high-level comments we provided, or additional comments in the packet that commissioners wanted to clarify? Or add context to, or that were really important?
I'll give people a sec to, looks like they're looking, so.
Yeah, it seems like there's some overlap between land use policy 2.4, Innovative Construction Techniques for Sustainability, with the thing we'll be reviewing tonight, just wanted to point that out.
With the, with the parking?
Cross-laminated timber. Like, do we want to be less specific or more specific?
What page are you?
It's point 2.4, which is...
It's on page four.
Thank you. Page four, the land use goals and policies?
Uh, pa, sorry, I misspoke, it's on page three of the land use goals and policies.
It specifically mentions CLT, and I don't remember.
You said 2.2?
2.4.
2.4, yes, okay.
Page three.
Oh wait, no, hold on.
Are you looking at the old policy number or at the new policy number?
Oh, no, I'm probably looking at the old one, but there was that one that had cross-laminated timber specifically called out.
I think you, you might be referring to the housing element, I know there was one in there, maybe it's in both, in which case, this is a good one to talk about.
Yeah, sorry, I'm crossing my wires here.
Okay, we'll come back to that one, then, when we're at the housing element. Does anybody else have any land use comments? Not hearing or seeing any, just double-checking with our online commissioners? Think we might be okay to move on for now.
All right, well, if there's any additional thoughts, we can come back to that at the end, but it sounds like we can move on to a review of the housing element. So similarly, hefty package here, housing, a little bit more detailed, a little bit more specific in terms of the types of topics being covered in the policy, split into, you know, under-goals on affordable housing, diversity of housing, special needs housing. So we wanted to ask, just broadly, again, are there, we've, we've done our, sort of our due diligence, due diligence, I'm not going to try again, in reviewing through all the comments and providing sort of a high-level view of what we heard, but are there additional thoughts, or priorities, or comments on housing that weren't on those first couple of slides, or did we want to come back to any one of those high-level topics and, and further the discussion tonight? Do you want to hop back up to those for now? I will add that this first one here, evaluate language, allow versus the city will do, we found this comment in a couple different places, in actually both elements, and just a general sort of comment we heard, and will be looking at as we review these policies, is just being more specific and diligent about how words like enhance, and ensure, and allow, and promote, and incentivize, and require, there's all these sorts of different words that you might start a policy with, and ensuring that those go in the right places to make sure that we're telling this to where we're prioritizing the policies the way they should be.
Sierra, could I maybe just add on to that? Real quick, piped in for the first time, hello commissioners, good to, good to see you again. I, I guess maybe, because on that, there are a number of comments, both in the housing and land use element, related to that, and maybe one sort of good question for you all is, I think some of the comments were to be more active in the voice. to be more active in the voice and the words that are being used versus some of the more passive language that's maybe more common in policies. Um, and, you know, oftentimes, at least, the sort of guidance in, in developing policies is that more active language will then go, and we'll go into the implementation sections and sort of the action portions of the elements of the comp plan. But, um, as commissioners, I don't know if you have strong thoughts either way, if you want your policies to be shaped in a more active manner, which is, you know, an approach some cities take.
I'll just chime in, because I know I said this in a number of spots. Um, I think for me, it's more kind of about plain language and just thinking about, I don't know, someone that doesn't know anything about planning policy, to just read it and say, what does encourage mean? Or like, what is, you know, I would rather just see, like, right, this is a goal, the city will do this. Our goal is to successfully, you know, implement X or progress towards Y or whatever. And so, I'm just trying to think a lot about, like, when I'm seeing, like, allow, or I'm like, well, are they going to allow it, or are we going to do it? Um, and so, I think that I'm really in support of the active voice, um, and especially in our goals. And then, I'm sure there will be a lot work around, breaking down and talking about what that would look like and how we can get there in the supporting language, we'll see.
I completely agree.
Yep.
Like, each of these points, like, you know, I sort of envision there's a rule somewhere in the code, development code, or there's a policy that the city creates, or there's a program that needs to be created, or maybe even a person to oversee something, right? Like, that's kind of, like, each of these should actually have an effect, right?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe there's like...
So, I guess the, the thought is just to be more, more specific in, in general in that way, and, and directing what those actions may end up being that come out of these policies?
At the end of the, at the end of this process, I would like to see what FEMA calls a crosswalk table, which is where you have the program, and then you have specific city policies in a different column, and like, you can see how each of these policies translates into a specific thing that the city has, either as a policy or a program, or something like that. Like, how are we actually implementing these?
Yeah, definitely. And I was weird, moving into sort of developing the implementation parts of the elements, that's, that's good guidance.
I know one of the comments that I had made at several points on this, and it kind of applied more to sort of the new policies that were being proposed, I, I just kind of felt it was already covered, um, under HO 1.3. You know, that, that really covers a lot. Allowed diverse housing types where appropriate, including middle housing types, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And even, uh, you know, I took it a step further on, on my comments, you know, I just felt that diverse covers everything and gives us flexibility, you know, and it's not leaving anything else. It means single-family homes, it means middle housing, it means, you know, multi-story mixed-use, or, you know, however high up we want to go. So, I think, you know, one, middle housing is sort of covered under that. Two, I kind of think middle housing, you know, it kind of gets into that terminology, again, you know, plain language, not everybody is going to know or understand. But I, I kept thinking about it, too. It's like, well, you know, we kind of get these new buzzwords and terminologies every few years, and, you know, it's like the flavor of the month, and, you know, a couple of years, you don't hear people really talking about it as much. But it doesn't mean that we aren't actually still planning for it. It's just like, you know, think, think of new urbanism. You know, it's just like, that was big in the 90s, and it's like, oh, what's this, oh, what's this thing happening down in Florida? Holy crap, that's great, oh my, they even, they even showed the Truman Show there, you know? But we don't really talk about it now, but it's still a concept that, you know, kind of finds its way itself into planning and policies. I kind of feel the way about middle housing. It's like, yes, it's important, but it's covered under diverse. I don't know if we necessarily need to create more policies and goals calling that out specifically, when it's already being called out in one of our earlier goals, because it's covered under diverse. I mean, it's, maybe it's just more of a, you know, a personal opinion of mine, but I, I know, it's like, you know, yes, we should have good policies and goals that really call out what we feel is important, but at the same time, we don't want to have eight million pages of policies and goals. We want it to be succinct, and I think when it is covered by one of our existing goals, then we should just kind of, you know, just go with that. But with the assumption that, yeah, that does include middle housing, but it also includes everything else that's called out here. I think, just saying diverse, kind of covers our basis. But I'm not sure how, you know, other people feel about that, or, you know, kind, kind of maybe what the trends are with other cities, though I've never been one to set my sails to what other cities are doing.
Are, are any of these directed by trying to clearly show compliance with state requirements?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I was going to state that. So, I think if we don't explicitly state middle housing, uh, things like that, when we go to certify the comp plan, um, I think we need to demonstrate that we're complying with the new legislation requirements, um...
Can we just put, like, an asterisk there, and then at the bottom saying, we interpret this to include middle housing? So, it's like, we're not forgetting about middle housing, it's in our comp plan, we've been talking about it for years, but, you know, I, I've got other issues with the state.
Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sierra, David, but that's what I understand.
Yeah, I think some of the, I mean, sometimes seemingly overly-specific language in the policies is for that reason, and, and ensuring compliance with, with these new mandates. That said, you know, I, there may be some flexibility in that, in that if there is a, um, as part of some of the introductory portion of the element, there's something that calls out middle housing, or if there's a call-out that's related to a specific policy that talks about, you know, how diversity of housing can be implemented through allowing middle housing types, that sort of thing. I think you, you might be able to cover your bases in that way. I, I wanted to say, um, also just on that, that I, I think you're, Chris, you're not the only one that made that comment, um, around moving away from the specificity of middle housing, and I think there was a question about whether to include other more specific types of middle housing in these, this policy language, and I think uniformly, the, the answer was no. Um, and that sort of brings up the other question, which, of course, this relates to land use as well, but in allowing flexibility in form and scale, maybe moving more towards a form-based code, where you're just allowing more units, and then allowing flexibility for a developer or home builder to decide what exact sort of form that takes, like, in that diversity, is maybe more accomplishing what, what you all are trying to achieve. And so, by not having that specificity in your policy language, you're reinforcing that?
I was, I was just taking a look through, I think, some of these policies, like 1.4 and 1.6, um, where they do specifically relate back to middle housing, but the policy themselves aren't necessarily only about middle housing, so you might be able to do just a review through, um, to be maybe a little bit more, um, I, I don't necessarily want to say vague, but, but a little bit more, I guess, high-level about how maybe there's policy about design standards and policies about offering assistance for permitting that isn't necessarily specific just to middle housing. Um, so, I guess, this is a thought that I had based on sort of what we're hearing here tonight. Um, and I also think on the next page here, um, the next slide, you could, I think one of the things that we did here, um, loud and clear that we included here was, again, that allowing for innovation and, and housing types be flexible and defining, um, so I think that this all comes back to sort of that topic of, you know, middle housing is a, is a term that applies to a very specific set of things right now, but it could definitely evolve over the next 10 years to mean very different things, or be more encompassing of new development types as well.
So, at the end of the day, is it Commerce's call on whether or not we get a thumbs up or a thumbs down in terms of the verbiage?
Well, it's not only Commerce, but, um, if we were taken to the growth hearings board on some type of appeal of, um, us not meeting the requirements under the law for updating our comp plan. So, there's a couple of vehicles, but yeah, we have to demonstrate to the Department of Commerce, who oversees growth management, that we're complying with, um, the overall legislation, old and new for GMA.
Do they, I don't want to say have a hotline, but is there, like, could, because I'm, I'm wondering if other cities are thinking about, you know, thinking about this, too, and it's just, you know, it's like, we're not ignoring it, but it, I don't want to say it's performative, but the, I mean, the fact that we're kind of almost afraid about it, you know, the way this law is now structured, that we're trying to really show, hey, we're trying to, we're trying to meet the law here, but when I feel that, in a way, we kind of already are, at the end of the day, it's a policy, you know? It was, you know, it's no sweat off of our backs, I guess, just having another line of policy, it's just, um, I don't like redundancy.
Yeah.
You know, trying to make it as, you know, simple and as easy as possible, and, and like, for me, looking at it, you know, seeing middle housing being brought up so much, so much, much, but not necessarily all the different other housing types, it's like, no, we're still interested in these other housing types as well. Middle housing is just one thing, but again, it's the flavor of the month right now, and that's what's getting a lot of attention, so...
Yeah, I, I don't think we get away from using a variety of housing types. I think it's just trying to demonstrate, we do have a representative, um, for, uh, from Commerce. I think what we're going to run into is we're the first wave of major updates on the comp plan, and once more people have done the work, it's a little easier as you go. Um, we're, we're the road, we're the road-testing division, um, being in the first round. So, a lot of times, that's good, but then, you know, there's not a lot of examples or a lot of clarity sometimes. So, I don't think we need to get freaked out about it, but I think we just want to make sure that it's clear what the intent is, and our intent is to, you know, to meet the requirements, that, um, you know, we don't want to get appealed, and we, we want to do what we need to do, um, and still have choices at the local level of how we, how we demonstrate how we do that.
Would, would we be appealed on just the comp plan, or would the appeal be if somebody said our code isn't satisfying?
Both.
Both?
We can be appealed on the comp plan before we ever get to development regulations, and we can be appealed on our development regulations, both, so...
And if we've already met some of the requirements, like, we have a FAR of 1.2 allowed on every single-family lot already, and 1.6 if you include a basement, and we already allowed two units, and if that's what they need to see, then pat ourselves on the back, we met the state requirement.
Or...
It's probably going to be more than that, but an FAR of 1.6 is still pretty.
Yeah, we can...
I think that's very achievable, um, and is in line with our missing middle housing guide. I don't think we have to do a lot of work, like, the, the amount of work relative to the number of, like, points in here, I feel like is not necessarily aligned, like, some work points might require more work than others.
Yeah.
I would just say, remember, this is the comp plan, so it's, goal and policy language is not exacting. I think, um, what you guys are speaking to is implementation measures, and so, that's where I think we can get more, I mean, goal and policy language sets the framework, but we also can have, be more strategic when it comes to implementation, and, and how we want to achieve these things, and what's, what's priority for the city. Um, I think we're going to have a lot to do with, as you can see, updating our comp plan is going to mean that we have all-new, um, zon, zoning districts, essentially. So, rewriting our zoning code is going to be on the agenda for next year, without a doubt, because there's no way we can implement the requirements of GMA and not basically throw the baby out with the bathwater and start on new zoning. Um, and we've needed to start on new zoning for quite some time, but because we're going to have the land use map with the comp plan, which designates these areas, then we're going to, we're going to have to update our regulations to fit that. So, I mean, that's going to be the first order of business in my mind, because those have to be coordinated and consistent, and then what other things are priority, you know, for us to look at. So, is it sub-area planning? Is it?
Yes.
You know, okay, that's, you know, and so, that's where I think, you know, you, you can outline, hey, as the planning commission, this is what we're recommending, that these are our priorities that we want to achieve based on goal and policy language. So, I'll be thinking about that.
I hope we can finally bridge the vast gap between RS 7200 and RS 8400 zones.
I think you're going to find that we don't have those zones anymore.
I've always wondered why there's only two single-family residential zones, and they're slightly different, um, but we have them both. Um, maybe a bit of a change of topic. One thing I feel like I would like to see this document be more, have a little bit more of this kind of a vision, um, and a vision statement, and I think I mentioned that in my response. And I think, um, for housing, um, you know, I think the vision is something like, you know, um, you know, the house, a house is a place for a person to thrive within the community, and the idea that people are permanent in the community, and the housing just kind of reflects where they are. And so, I think our policies should be kind of, have this idea about who we are as a community and how we live as a community, and how we relate to each other as a community through our housing, if that kind of makes sense. Um, I don't know how you all feel about this, but I think it sort of helps guide some of the policies that we would give, and some of the things that I think would help direct us. And I added several points that I feel like would kind of help clarify those and implement those, and, you know, kind of things that I see in the community, they don't necessarily have to be those exact things. Um, but I think, um, you know, I see several things on new topics slash more context is needed that I seem to have suggested, including economic integration and spec, spectrum of housing security, which I feel like is a very jargony topic, that maybe could use some flexibility, but like, we keep talking about homeownership, and homeownership and things like that, but, um, you know, there is, uh, when you're talking about housing, the spectrum of housing security, or spectrum of housing tenure, which, like, goes from being unhoused to being a full-fledged homeowner in a market-rate home. And I think our policy should be to get as many people as possible into the most secure tenure of housing as possible. And, um, when I say secure tenure of housing, I don't necessarily mean homeownership, but there are some things that are similar to homeownership, like living in a co-op, or social housing, or, you know, condominium is a type of homeownership, but I think there's like, um, basically the idea is you don't have a landlord, you have, like, some kind of stake in the community where you live. And the rule of thumb is that, you know, if you live somewhere for five years, it's economically disadvantageous and starts to become, um, like, this is one of those ways that systemic discrimination has happened in the past, where people don't have access to homeownership because they're renting and they have a landlord forever. So, I think when we're talking about writing housing policy, and I don't quite know exactly what the city, what, like, you know, levers the city has to pull on this, other than working with people and tracking it, um, but I think that's sort of an important point to bring up and, you know, work through the comprehensive plan. Uh, it's in several of the other bullet points in the comprehensive plan, things like homeownership. So, I think this actually fits and kind of takes some of those points and makes it a little bit more defined in a way that also, like, if you look at these spectrum of housing, um, charts, like, the subsidized housing, the subsidized rentals are always lower than market-rate rentals. And I think, um, you know, we should be looking for ways where people who are lower, have lower incomes are also able to be secure in their house as well, where they're not just like, you know, subject to the whims of some landlord. So, I think that kind of, that seems to have several, like, policy implications and enforcement things, so I think that might be important to include, uh, maybe in a less jargony way. The other one, there's a couple other things, economics, economic integration, like, if you go to certain other waterfront communities around us, like, they have a very particular way that they view their community, and it is that the wealthy people live in the nice areas near the water, and everyone else gets crammed up on Highway 99. And I think, you know, we're, as a community, kind of, you know, we're, we're going through a large growth period, and I think, um, you know, it will help to define here sort of like, that we're not that, um, that we do... Um, that we do value ourselves, not just as a community, not just like, you know, we do have like, you know, there's like the, there's like the rocky road diversity and the Baskin Robbins diversity. In Rocky Road, all the flavors are mixed together. And in Baskin Robbins, you have 31 flavors, but they're all in their own separate buckets. And I think this is an opportunity to say we're more of the rocky road diversity, right? Like, um, you know, we don't have all the subsidized housing in one neighborhood and we're not plowing over another hood, neighborhood for gentrified, like, you know, gentrify housing or whatever. Um, every neighborhood should have a little bit of mix. And I think that, um, you know, ideally, we should even get more gang related neighborhoods, like living in a building shouldn't permanently mark you as a particular kind of income class if we can avoid that. And so I think that's something that ultimately leads to city policies where we're sort of tracking development and affordable housing, which we should be doing anyways if we're preserving affordable housing. And also market rate housing and things like that. And then ultimately we've got this study that we're doing now that is basically ascribe like a particular income range to a particular type of housing. That I think when the comprehensive plan comes out, we should be looking at it and say, okay, are we putting all of the zero to 80% AMI people in one neighborhood and are we putting all the 120% and up AMI people in another neighborhood? Like, I think those things kind of want to mix. Um, and then as we go sort of further down the spectrum of housing, I think there are some points, um, like I've talked to a few people. Uh, one of them is an architect that, um, works on housing for people who are formerly homeless. And he says, one of the shocking things about when he walks around his projects, it's actually how quiet they are. Because, and it makes, makes logical sense to me, right? Like, if you've been living out on the street and then suddenly you have a home, I can see why you wouldn't want to go back out on the street. But I think, um, you know, one of the sort of vision things is like, um, people in the context of their overall community. And, you know, for programs for things like transitional housing or permanent supportive housing, I think it's important that we as a city, um, you know, the people who are managing these programs will have their own way, like resources. They're, they're also trying to make sure that people have ties to the community. But, you know, what sort of ties can the community then, like what sort of work does the community need to do in order to make sure that, um, people are integrated into the community into the way that they can? Like, are there social things? Are there like programs that you should be doing? So I think, um, having a vision about like the entire spectrum of housing, right? Like, and how it relates with the community are important things to look at. And so I added several bullet points about that. Um, and then something with, uh, you know, mix of housing, uh, uses with mixed use stuff. But I think that those are sort of the big, that's sort of my speech of why I added several bullet points. What do you all think?
I guess some of that comes down to what, what is the city actually able to do with some of those ideas and concepts versus that is not currently the role or job of the city or just because, because, you know, the, the authority that the city has, it just can't, it can't implement some of those ideas, you know? It's still, a lot, a lot of stuff is still, you know, more market rate. It's, 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 you know, the, you know, the cities can set goals and policies, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's still up to individual property owners and developers, you know, they can mandate certain things, but, um, I'm just, I just, I just wonder at what point is this, would the city be overstepping in its role?
And I think, um, in the vision statement is an opportunity to sort of set those guiding points. And then how exactly they're implemented, I think is an open question. Like if it's the city is more like tracking these things. Um, like that's less of an overstepping of the bound than like if they were to say, oh, you need two affordable units out of every eight in this particular development. And I guess there's a spectrum of that, but, um, do you think they're worthwhile to include in here? I mean, I do. And I also think there should be a vision statement, but.
I guess we could always ask the city. How do they feel? Or, you know, kind of what's their opinion in terms of, is some of those topics, is that, is, is that something that's even doable by the city? Is it appropriate to have these as?
Um, I, well, I, I think there's some things that the city can do and there's other things that the city can't do. Um, and when we also have private property rights, so, um, and we have a capitalistic, um, economic structure. So we work within certain bounds of what the city can do and promote, um, staffing, dollars, resources to do certain things. So I would say if we're tracking things, just to track them, I would say, don't think it's a great idea. If we're tracking things for a purpose, then let's track things for a purpose, right? So kind of be thinking, like, taking it from an idea of what is that, what do we accomplish or what are we trying to do with at the end of that? Um, I do like your idea a lot. Not that I don't like your other ideas, I'm not saying that. Um, I do like the idea of maybe fleshing out a vision for each element. I think that's a great idea as far as the intro and, and the background of maybe setting the stage for the overall goals and policies. So we have the overarching vision statement, but maybe, uh, working on kind of what the overarching vision is or what we're trying to accomplish for each element. If you guys think that's a good idea, I think, I thought that was a really good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll work on, we'll work on that. Um, I think it just sets it up for the reader and then also for staff um, to implement it that, you know, we have some overarching direction. And that's what we're basing our overall goal and policy language, which then becomes our development code, right? And implementation, so. Great idea. All right.
Does anybody else have any, um, comments or points they kind of want to revisit that they made on their submissions?
We are at 30 minutes of the housing discussion, but since we ended land use early, we do have more time to revisit, um, any comments.
Well, you guys are looking. I'll double check with our online commissioners if either of our online commissioners have any additional points for the, uh, housing element that they want to bring up?
One, one comment I would, um, add is I know that homeownership comes up a lot, um, for the city and for people's concerns. But I would also say there's, um, types of housing that we're talking about that doesn't equate to homeownership. So when we're talking about unhoused and secure housing and stuff, it's not about homeownership. So I think we need to at least separate those baskets of variety of types of housing that we're doing. That some, you know, some were, were trying to house people. And in other things, we're, you know, try, trying to provide opportunities for a multitude of housing types and varieties. And then at the same time, we're trying to promote that people can have an opportunity for homeownership and how we can do that as well. So I think they're separate. Um, in some regards of kind of how you approach those different types of housing, um, even though it all kind of goes in that basket of variety of housing types, I guess. So I would, to me, it, at least for goal and policy language, I think there needs to be a little bit of clarity of what that looks like. Because right now we have it all under, we're doing all this variety of housing types for homeownership. It's like, well, not necessarily. There's different things that we're trying to accomplish.
Is there, um, I know one of the things, um, why I like the spectrum of housing tenure is that the idea that, um, wherever you are in there, you might move up or down. And so if you're moving down the spectra, the spectrum and like, you're about to lose your apartment, like, you know, that starts to, you know, trigger certain things, like, do you have to move to transitional homeownership or transitional housing? Or is there something where the city can kind of support you? If you're about to lose your home because you can't afford the property taxes or something like, is there something where then you're supported like? Um, and, um, so I think there is a point where those two things meet, um, where like you're kind of moving up and down the spectrum of hu, of housing.
Yeah, you could. All I was, all I was saying is sometimes certain types of housing are not necessarily in a point in time of about owning that right. At times there is, and we absolutely want to provide as much opportunity for future generations and current generations actually, to be able to, you know, um, hopefully achieve homeownership. But there's, yeah, there's different degrees and varieties of how we do that. And maybe it's not, like you were saying earlier, maybe it's not what I grew up where I was going to have a single family home with a two car garage, a white picket fence, a front and a backyard. Um, maybe that looks different now, but there's still an ownership opportunity for, for people to get in on.
I, I work with a guy who lives in a cohousing development and, um, they got together and they built this apartment building and they have shares in it. And so like, I think it's not, not in lawn market rate housing, but like there was, you know, some, basically an architect built it. And, um, like, I think there are like things that are similar to homeownership, but aren't necessarily explicitly homeownership that like have that level of security that you would get with homeownership, that level of control over your space, that level of investment in the property.
Sure.
Lack of a landlord.
Four or five people are in a home and they own one fifth of the home.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I think, um, maybe specifying homeownership might predispose, like, I don't necessarily, I think those things can be the equivalent of homeownership.
Sure.
So if we like expand on what that concept of homeownership is, I think that opens it up to a range of, you know, really interesting options, right?
Right.
Like the cohousing, you actually like, I would say in some ways it's superior to traditional homeownership because you actually get a built in community along with the, you know, the security in your housing. And so I think that's kind of like, you know, looking at these parallel paths is something that we should be considering.
Yeah, different strokes for different folks, right? Like there's all different types of, of, of ways that people can, can get there beyond maybe what we've historically viewed that as. Um, and also people to transition as they get older or people to start getting a, a piece of homeownership. And yeah, I think there's all kinds of different ways to, that we have to start looking and thinking about that.
Yeah. So in the comp plan, I would clarify the language a bit maybe. And then, um, I don't know what that means for city policies, but, you know, to be determined.
Looks like David has his hand up.
Yeah, and I, I know we may be out of time, so I, I did have one area that I was hoping to maybe, um, hear a little discussion on if we do have, have the time for it?
Yeah, let's go.
Yeah, okay. Uh, well, I know that, uh, I think a number of you, and this is, this is related, I think, that discussion. I'm sorry, I didn't want, didn't mean to cut, cut this off. Um, but I think, you know, there, there are a couple of comments, one in particular saying that the section around anti displacement or preservation was a little light. Um, and other comments, just a lot, I think a lot of questions in general around what can the city do to preserve existing housing stock, um, whether it's for renters or homeowners. Um, and, and I guess maybe some, some direction from, from this commission on, on where you think the city should take that in, in policy. Um, because, I mean, it, similar to this discussion, there's only so much the city can do. A lot of, a lot of strategies focused around preservation um, or anti displacement would require partnerships and funding that comes from outside of the city's own resources. Um, or if we're talking about things like rental assistance, um, you know, rental or renter or tenant, um, relocation assistance, things like that. Um, if, if you think that's a direction that the city should be emphasizing or, um, at least exploring, and that's, that's some direction that could be given through policy. Um, that's maybe a, something I'd, I'd hope to hear a little more direction from this commission on as we're working on this.
It's one of those things where, um, people being permanent as a vision statement kind of helps guide that, if that makes sense. What are you all's thoughts?
I know that's going to be a tough one if, you know, because we were talking about lot sizes and aggregation and, you know, theoretically, if properties are being aggregated, then the existing homeowner is an active participant in it. And they're being compensated, you know, for the sale of their land. They're a willing, uh, player in, in the game. Um, so it's not really a displacement issue for them unless you want to categorize displacement as they agree to sell their land, but the money they get for their property doesn't allow them to stay in the community. If they want to stay in the community, which would be a shame. But we've been talking about a lot, and Ohio have been talking about a lot, that, you know, a lot of our apartment stock is getting up there in age. And that is, that is going to be a big target, you know, for redevelopment. One, because it's already larger lots, it's, you know, especially on its locations, it's, uh, in, in the north end, it's, it's the closest spot, spots to the light rail station. But the, you know, those, those are probably out of state corporations that, you know, own these lots. Uh, so in those cases, the, the, um, the residents are going to be displaced because they don't own it, they're not getting anything. Um, you know, the developers, you know, it may be phased because sometimes these projects take years. So they can just choose not to renew leases. And so they're, you know, it's the gradual dispersment of, of the property. But I know that the, the potential for the development to be penalized because it is causing displacement, you know, we need to, we need to think about that. But, you know, at the same time, we're encouraging this redevelopment. So it would make sense that, you know, because the city in a way is a participant in this process, that we should have some sort of mechanism to, to help these people out, um, who have, you know, run the risk of being displaced. But not necessarily where it's so punitive that it discourages the redevelopment in the first place.
So I keep thinking back to this one paper I saw from like 1998 that identifies naturally occurring affordable housing clusters in Puget Sound. And a lot of them are up in Linwood, but, um, I think the area you're talking about is actually one. Um, and so this is where I think, um, a policy of both encouraging economic integration and, um, the security of housing tenure could actually identify that, right? Like you've got, um, you know, we, we've probably got some naturally occurring affordable housing communities. We don't necessarily know where they are, but that's something we could probably look at through rental monitoring or something, right? Like identify where is it, like, risk of displacement, like, is there a delta between the market rate housing and the, um, the, what's being charged in rent? And this is with, uh, Capri, which is formerly Greenwood, I think, or Green Sleeves or Green something off of 52nd.
They shouldn't be allowed to change names. It makes it confusing when you've been in the city as long as I have and some of these places have changed names like four times.
My, my name, my brain keeps changing into crappy apartments, um, which is probably bad. But, um, yeah, so like a lot of people were displaced when the rent was doubled because they came in and like changed all the, the, the funding and stuff. And I don't know where you can find a two bedroom apartment for $800 nowadays, um, North Dakota, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, uh, I just happened to be recently, it was research I was doing for something else. Uh, I was just curious and I kind of looked at the rental rates because it's all online now, you know, apartments.com you go. And I was really surprised to see that, you know, Northern Lights was renting at almost the same cost that Terror Station is renting at. is renting at. And you're like, Terror Station is right next to the light rail station and is a brand-new building. Northern Lights was developed in 1977 and is a good hefty walk away from the Linwood Station, and yet the rents were very close. Now, there might be a little bit difference in terms of square footage, but at the end of the day, you're, what's being carved out of your paycheck, you're not looking at square footage, you're just looking at the amount.
Right.
So I, I think that's one thing to keep in mind, that we may think that they're affordable apartments. But when you start comparing them to what, you know, what the market's actually asking for right now, it's the same. And that, that actually kind of surprised me. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, gets, I can make this argument for just about everything that I've proposed over the last 20 years. You know, sometimes we wait too long and stuff happens, and then we're like, well, we missed our opportunity. In the case of Northern Lights, you know, they're doing cosmetic repairs to their facilities to, you know, to try and stay in that game. That means they're going to be asking more for that rent, too. So, you know, they're sort of slapping lipstick, you know, on their, on their, on, on the exterior, and they're probably doing some interior upgrades as well, but.
Yeah, and I think this is one-
It's not affordable.
And I think this is a question that probably should be a bullet point, like, where is the affordable housing, right? Like, do we know that? Like, you know, is there some data source we can get to identify where these displacement risks are? You know, is, can, can we monitor the rents over time? Is HASCO tracking housing vouchers in these developments? You know, there's probably a few places we could look. But, like, ultimately, we sort of need to know where it is, and then when we've identified it as, at risk, then we sort of need to develop a strategy to, I think, right?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's tough. We, at least in terms of sort of these garden-style apartment complexes, we've had one that did convert to condos. Fortunately, that was probably pushing 15-plus years ago now, so it may not be easy to find the data. But, you know, in that case, everybody who was in that complex was displaced. The complex didn't get torn down. It got, you know, they gutted the interiors and spruced them up and then changed them, you know, changed them to condos. But that's, I mean, that's the only thing I can think of off the top of my head where there would have been sort of a mass displacement. And that would have happened, you know, that wasn't like, it was, okay, you're displaced, and all of a sudden, you know, the next month, the new people are in being charged a higher rent. That took a long time for them to, you know, to finish that, that, that complex. So I, 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 yeah, that's a good question. I just don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I think that ultimately wants to be a comprehensive plan element. And then, like, where is the affordable housing, right? Like, where is at-risk of displacement? Like, you know, maybe that's two or one point, I'm not sure. But that's something we should be tracking, because we need to know, like, if we're gonna even develop a strategy for this, right?
I, I would say, you know, if the patterns of Mount LeTearr follow the patterns in other parts of the region, you know, especially in Seattle, it's the, it's the units that aren't owned by corporations. It's probably those mom-and-pop-run-type things where they only own one building, that's it. You know, it's kind of their nest egg. Generally, in quotes, they tend to not be as aggressive with their, their raising of the rents. And usually, it's reactive to like, oh, my property taxes went up like crazy, I gotta raise the rent, otherwise I'm, I'm in the hole every month. I, you know, I've got to at least break even. I think you're, you would probably find those type of complexes, going to be more geared towards being affordable, just because they're maybe not trying to gouge. Their, their renters, or they recognize, hey, I've got a long-term tenant, I want to keep them. Why am I going to jack their rent up by $1,000 a month?
Yeah, so important thing to track. And then, once the redevelopment does happen, you know, is it 0% affordable, or is, you know, I think the, you know, HASCO has a few complexes they develop around that, I think the ones down, like, in Edmonds are market rate, and they kind of subsidize the ones that are in, like, Linwood or here, where they're below market rate. So you could potentially have HASCO subsidize an entire apartment complex here to preserve affordable housing stock. But I would question if that actually works against us if we're trying to achieve economic integration. Like, if 212 is like, you know, the place where we put all the dumpy affordable housing, that then gets redeveloped into permanent affordable housing, where we just kind of warehouse people with less income. Like, I think that is like the Edmonds approach to affordable housing. Whereas I think if it was more mixed income, and then we had that development subsidize, subsidize affordable housing elsewhere in the city that maybe didn't have so much, like, that is more of a partnership and probably not something the city can mandate. But that does, you know, I don't know whether that's a vision thing or whatnot, but I do think that, like, you know, my understanding of subsidized housing, and it's limited, is that, like, it is still an economic prospect, like many other things. Like, maybe it can be funded by grants, maybe it can be funded by the federal government. But like, you know, there are some instances where affordable housing is subsidized by market rate housing within the same complex, or within a collection of complexes. And so that's something I wish I knew a bit more about, actually. But I think, you know, having a vision about how, you know, we achieve sort of the security, both while the building is being developed, because those people are going to be displaced while HASCO or whoever is rebuilding all that. And then having, you know, then come back and then reestablish whatever community was there before, if that's even how it works, or if it's all new people coming in, I don't know. But I think those are, maybe, maybe there's some, like, elements in there that are bullet points that wind up becoming.
Well, I, I think the, you know, the economic integration is, is key and fundamental. It's just like, we, we've seen decades of what happens when you segregate populations based on race or based on economics. It just, it does not end well. And, you know, everyone's part of the community, so everyone should have, you know, the right and the ability to live where they want to live. The, what I think maybe where the city could have a hand in helping facilitate that is by offering, you know, tax breaks, or mandates, like, you know, bonus, you know, kind of akin to the sort of the bonus density options, like, okay, we'll let you do X, Y, and Z as a city that's, you know, that's above and beyond what we normally would allow. But in return, you've got to guarantee that for 20 years, 30 years, you know, I've seen some places mandate 40 years, you've got to have a certain percentage of these units be affordable, and then set whatever that affordability rate is. Usually, it's a percentage of the, you know, the reason, regions' consumer price index or something. I don't know, you know, it usually comes up with a number. But no matter what, you look at it, you look at the number, and you're just like, whose idea of affordable is that? That's not affordable. So it's, it's, it would be one, you know, the city saying, yeah, we'll let you do it, but you gotta have affordable units. And then making sure that those units are actually affordable.
Yeah.
Um, if I could step in, just want to emphasize that we have done a pretty in-depth Housing Needs Analysis, and also a Racial Disparate Impacts Analysis that was presented before, that really delve into where naturally occurring housing is in our city, and also where displacement is currently occurring. Maybe it's a matter of expanding on that and, and highlighting policies that can speak to that analysis that we've already done. Yeah, anything you can add to that?
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, and I guess for David, do you have anything else to add?
Well, I, I mean, as has already, I think, been voiced, it's a, it's a very difficult, of course, challenge that all cities are facing. And I think there's, there's definitely a need to continue to, to monitor and understand where the risks of displacement are, where these, these potential properties are, and work with your partners like HASCO and others to, to come up with innovative solutions to provide not just subsidized housing or purchase of some of these naturally occurring affordable housing developments, but, but work to, to provide other, you know, innovations within mixed-income developments, et cetera. I think it's, it's enough direction to go on in terms of, from a policy standpoint, when we get into implementation and of, and actually finding the, the resources and the ability to, to enact some of those policies from the city standpoint is where it becomes more of a challenge. So obviously, more, more work to be done in that regard. But I think that there's good sort of direction from the commission at this point in terms of fleshing out some of those, that policy language, and maybe incorporating some of that, some of that analysis that you spoke to, Jonathan, will obviously be included in the background report, and they could be included in some of the front matter of the element itself, or the, you know, the vision statement as well, if we think that's important.
Cool. I had a, I had a question. So it sounds like what you're describing is like, we don't really have the mechanism of, like, enforcing these things, but we do have some ability for coordination and developing partnerships. When, you know, I imagine when an affordable housing development is on sale, we don't have the developer saying to the, popping up to the city and say, hey, we're selling this. But when we do have an affordable housing developer coming into the community, they probably engage with the city, I imagine. Is that the case? Or do they just pop up and say, hey, we bought this, by the way? Good on us, we didn't need your help.
We haven't had that in a long time.
Sorry. Question for you, Kristi, yeah?
Yeah, I was just saying that we haven't had someone build affordable housing in the city in quite some time. So I, we did a pre-app recently down at Terror Station for the piece of property that's now like a big hole across from the transit center. And they were looking at potentially doing some affordable apartment complex. But that's really the only thing that has kind of come across our way for many, many years.
Okay, so it's not very common for people to even reach out for partnerships?
Well, we, we've had faith-based institutions.
Oh, that's true.
Reaching out, expressing interest in, in promoting more affordable housing. But nothing ever came to fruition.
Same pious, potentially doing something.
They've been talking about that for years.
Yeah.
Decades.
Yeah.
That, that actually kind of brings up one thing. I can't remember if I saw it or made a comment on it. It talked about loosening design standards for affordable housing. I don't agree with that. I, I understand design costs can raise the price, but I, I don't think affordable housing should be exempt.
Depends.
From design standards.
Depends on the, depends on the standard. If it's like, you know, facade articulation or something kind of shallow, I think that, you know, we should probably be questioning if that's even valid. If it means you have a crappier house overall because you have less money, I think we should be moving away from that. I mean, you know, there's market realities, but like, you know, the minimum standards are the minimum standards. And like, are we relaxing it just because you have less money? Like, then why are we, you know, why do people who have less money have lower minimum standards? Like, why don't we just lower all the standards?
I would just be careful in equating, doing away with certain standards equates to affordability. So market rates, market rate. So I can build a box and I cannot do any design standards. And if I can get $2,500 rent, I'll get $2,500 rent. So doesn't necessarily in free market, doesn't, A doesn't equal B plus C. It's, you know, you gotta be, like art. Yeah. So I think, you know, just be leery of, certain things don't equate to ownership, certain things don't equate to affordability, certain things don't necessarily translate. It's, it's a, it's a tricky, it's a tricky way that I guess we'd have to take a look at things. But I think it's something definitely to consider of how much the new building standards that just got passed for energy efficiency, it's probably going to add about $30,000 to each unit to comply with new Washington State Code Council standards. So I think it's something to consider when you're saying, affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, do this, do this, do this, do this. Affordable housing, more housing, more housing, do this, do this, do this. So, because all these do this adds up to the cost of housing increasing.
I do wish I could see a pro forma for every regulation, you know, like, you know, some, somebody-
There was, there was performas done for that, and that was the huge argument. But there was, they required to do an economic analysis, but there was resignations and infighting, and it was pretty brutal this last go-around. But it's still, regulations got passed, and it still adds to the cost of housing. It doesn't, you know, I mean, it's, it's all those differing things that you want to achieve as far as energy efficiency, climate change, and, and, and good things to take care of, but it's always a balance, right? Housing affordability versus this. So just, it's, it's looking at the bigger picture when we're doing all of this.
Yeah. One phrase I like is health, safety, and welfare.
Yep.
And like, if we have, you know, if we decide that, oh, affordable housing can have less energy standards, it makes leakier buildings, it has no air conditioning, and then 10 years from now, we have a massive heat wave where you can no longer inhabit the building, like, you know, we have not protected the health, safety, and welfare. So I do think that's probably a good litmus test of like, what design standards are important.
Yeah. We do have a few more slides to go through, so are there any other questions, comments on these two elements?
Not seeing any person, just double-checking with our online commissioners. Not hearing or seeing anything, so yeah, let's go ahead and move forward.
Okay.
All right. So as we move through our review of all eight elements in the comprehensive plan, our next up here is to sort of introduce the next couple of elements and goals and policies matrix that we'll be bringing to our next meeting. So tonight, we're going to be introducing the environment as well as the parks, recreation parks and open space element. So the environment element is really the element in the comp plan that's going to have the goals and the policies that relate back to critical areas, incorporating state guidance and requirements as it comes to dealing with the shoreline and streams and wetlands and fish habitat, and sort of all those water resource issues, as well as goals on urban forestry management, sort of relating back to the city's work on urban forestry management. Sorry.
Sorry.
And it's also sort of our place where we can start incorporating some sustainability and resiliency, more specific goals. These are, again, topics that we do try and are wanting to integrate into all the policies and goals in the element. But this is a place where we can, you know, if, if we want to get a little more specific about greenhouse, greenhouse gas emission reduction planning, prepping the city for requirements that will go into effect in 2029. This is our opportunity here to sort of set the stage and do some initial work to sort of start prepping, prepping the policy and goal work for what will be required in a few years. Thinking about natural hazard mitigation planning, resiliency to climate change, and also looking at waste reduction and energy efficiency. And now, so we have prepared some proposed draft goals. These goals, as well as sort of the outline of the policies to be included in the plan, were the content that were presented to CPAG this month. So we are going through and updating the policies, as well as looking at the, the goals with that new sort of, you know, lens from CPAG. So they might change a little bit between now and the time that you see them. But really, what we've done is structure the element with a goal that reads to protect natural resource areas and critical areas, to ensure clean air, clean water, and healthy environment. Another goal on engaging with members of the community to promote active public participation and education in the environmental planning process. A third goal to preserve and maintain the urban tree canopy through urban forest management. A fourth one to take actions that promote environmental resiliency. And lastly, to take actions to reduce the production or spread of greenhouse gases. So this was sort of an overall spread of sort of the topics and ideas. So this was sort of an overall spread of sort of the topics and ideas to outline the environment element. So as we move on to parks or to recreation parks and open space, this is, you know, an element in the plan that does have some close ties to the environment element as well as the land use, the transportation element. It is, the purpose really is to provide goals and policies that will speak to sort of, you know, how the city will approach recreation and the maintenance of parks and the activation of parks and open space in the coming years. There's also policies related to open space, related to the environment within the parks, policies about recreation opportunities, you know, how to both use conservation land as recreation spaces as well as education spaces. And it really is sort of like the place where you start to outline the goals for how the city's recreation parks and open space master plan will be updated on a more sort of regular basis. So I can't, I guess, quite remember the timing of your recreation parks and open space plan update, but that's more of like the action plan for how the city is going to implement and maintain their parks, facilities. And the, the element is where we can sort of start looking sort of at that 20-year vision of what should be updated in the next master plan update.
I believe it's a five-year plan that was recently updated, last year or two years ago?
I believe it was last year.
Last year.
But I could lose track of time sometimes. But I, I thought it was last year. Do you guys remember? Was it last year or maybe a year and a half ago?
I think it was 22.
It might have been two. I was on NPIS when we started reviewing that. And then I came here, I think, before it finished. So it's just in the last couple of years.
Yeah, it's been the last couple-ish.
Has RPAC, when is RPAC and NPIS reviewing this portion of the comp plan?
I know that for the initial review, it was done through Parks and Rec, through the director and such. And so they'll also get a, a crack at it as we get going to review these.
Okay. And so they've looked at it, their feedback has incorporated it, and then they'll look at it again?
Yep.
Cool. When we get the printout, if there are certain language that we're trying to use to conform with state requirements, could that be highlighted? Like, I mean, environmental plan, right? Like, the state is probably telling us to do certain things, and some of these things are from us. But it would be helpful to know, like, you know, like with missing middle, right? Like, which of these things are?
Yeah, that's why I'm laughing. That's exactly what I thought about.
I would like to understand that.
Some of the newer legislation or requirements that are outlined, okay?
When you get the policy language, you'll see that some policy statements are highlighted. So I believe that's speaking to, with the new requirements will be for that 2029 planning year.
Cool.
But we can make that clear.
Yeah, we'll make that more explicit in the packet.
Okay. Would anyone like an update from the CPAG meeting last front Monday, Wednesday, when we discussed this?
Well, real quick, when we, when we get sort of the next version of these, will it also include the Park and Rec group's comments? So we can see, you know, kind of what they're saying as well?
Well, our, our Recreation Parks and Recreation Parks Director reviewed the policy language via the RPAC. We can always go back and present this at a later date, but it was vetted through the director and also CPAG at this point. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it back.
Okay.
Cool.
Anything else on this slide? We do have the draft goals to go through.
Cool.
Not hearing or seeing anything, so yeah, Mark, you can go ahead.
All right. So again, there are five proposed draft goals for the Recreation Parks Open Space Element. These do relate somewhat back to the master plan. But the first one is to ensure the Mountain Lake Terrace Parks Recreation Facilities and Open Spaces serve the needs of current and future populations. A second goal to provide a variety of recreational opportunities that support the health, wellness, and engagement of all community members. So speaking to sort of the public participation in the parks' planning process as well as activation of parks. A third one here, promote connectivity between parks, recreation facilities, open spaces, schools, residential areas, employment centers, and key community destinations. This really is the, is a policy where we're trying to, or a goal where we're trying to include policy language that sort of highlights the relationship between the park system and the transportation system. There are trails in parks that add to the pedestrian network. There are parks that need to be connected to our neighborhoods and to our communities. And so there are several policies here that talk about that relationship. And then number four, use the park, recreation, and open space system to provide opportunities for the Mountain Lake Terrace community to foster connections and enhance neighborhood involvement. And then five, to utilize park and open space systems to emphasize and protect the environmental qualities and natural amenities within the cities. So again, this helps us relate back to the environment element and sort of highlight those connections and those relationships. Sweet. Yes, yeah, so, so a highlight of next steps as we move forward. Today, we held a discussion of the land use and housing goals and policies as well as introducing and going over the highlights of, in the environment and our POS elements. At our next upcoming meeting on March 25th, it's our plan to distribute again the packets for your comment of the environment element policies as well as the parks, recreation, open space goals and policies. So that'll be sort of the highlight of that meeting. It'll also be our opportunity to introduce the economic vitality element. And then in early April, we'll discuss the environment and parks and open space, and then distribute economic vitality. So we kind of have this, this staggered approach as we head through the rest of the spring.
So I'll take this. Terms of engagement, so as you know, we're working with the VITA agency on targeted engagement to identify and work with underrepresented members of our community. So we just got a draft community engagement plan that we're reviewing, and it highlights specific strategies to utilize for spring engagement. So you'll be seeing more of that. Again, planning for the open house on March 26th, that's here in City Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the goal there is to gather additional feedback on the draft vision statement that you all recommended. Goals and policies in development, so focusing on land use, housing, environment, and recreation parks and open space at this point. And we're still identifying other topic areas that we'll, we'll bring to that meeting. And then coordinating with the DI Commission on March 20th, we'll be presenting to that body on engagement, draft vision statement and goals and policies, specifically equity policies that tie back to regional guidance. And then our draft environmental impact statement is, we're anticipating it published in late spring. So there'll be a public comment period and public meeting that coincides with that published date. And so we will seek to gather input on the alternatives and impacts identified in the draft. And I think, I think that's it. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got a question. When it comes with this VITA agency, trying to identify the underrepresented members of the community, is it underrepresented based off of current engagement from the public? Or is it?
Yeah, so.
So you're just kind of looking at who's showing up to our meetings, who's, who's either made comments online or, you know, written comments or however you guys are accepting it and realizing that there's a gap and we're missing kind of a certain demographics and then trying to reach out to those, those demographics?
Exactly, yeah. So it's looking at what our outreach approaches have been. I mean, sort of helping us to better those outreach strategies and really identify the groups that we really need to be targeting as part of this process.
Is it multiple groups or just kind of more one, more than anybody else, or?
I'm just multiple groups.
Okay, because I'm like, you know, it's, it's like pulling teeth trying to get anybody to.
Sure, yeah.
To come to these meetings on a, on a normal, you know, and, 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 you know, for just about anything we ever do. It's very rare that we actually have a guest here tonight, which we very much appreciate. So it's just, you know, in my mind, you could say just about everybody's underrepresented because nobody, I don't want to make a blanket statement like that, but historically, the general public doesn't engage at all, you know? They don't, they don't show up to the meetings, they don't make their comments. You know, there's, there's some that do, but, so obviously at big events like this, you know, it does generate some interest in no little part because the city is really trying to get the word out, every single city happenings and the website and, you know, all that other stuff. So I was just, I was just kind of curious to, you know, is, are, are you seeing like a huge gap of people not being represented? Or is it just kind of?
I mean, there's, there's definitely a gap, and it's also based on feedback we've heard from City Council, the DI Committee, about ways that we can improve our engagement program. So that, that's really the point here, why we are going this route.
Is there a, I'm, I'm, I'm just assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm assuming you're, we're probably looking at more of the racial makeup in terms of the gap in engagement? Or are we also looking at the geographic gap? Are there certain parts of the city that just aren't engaging?
It's geographic, it's racial, it's.
Everything.
Yeah, abilities, all that, yeah.
Just curious. We don't normally get to hear about this kind of stuff, so it's just kind of peek behind the curtains.
Any other questions?
So an update from the last CPAG meeting.
Yeah.
Which was already, so.
Yeah, you had.
Which is already given, but like, you know, I can provide my own report.
Sure.
So I think it was, it was a little bit more sparsely attended than some of the other CPAG meetings. But I think there was good discussion, some things that stuck out to me. There were questions about certain things, especially if some of the elements could be combined. Is one of my memories of like, you know, like, you know, are, are the bullet points actually, you know, correct? Or do they need to be combined or moved? A couple of things that I think stood out were the question of incentivize versus require. I think getting back to kind of maybe some of the discussion earlier at this meeting, that is something that came up at the last CPAG meeting. There was also discussion about the parks, both enforcement and maybe using them as like a way of enhancing our community, possibly with ties to economic development. Is there anything, are there any other salient points you could think of to bring up? Like, those are kind of the things that stood out to me. And I did, I didn't take very good notes because it was a lot of board discussion and I was wandering from one to the other, but.
I guess the, since it was a board discussion, is that, will that be sort of synthesized and created like a, sort of like a hard copy format?
Well, so a lot of that feedback on those boards will be incorporated in the policy statements that you'll see. And then we'll have that column again that says, that highlights the CPAG specific comments.
Do we have pictures of those boards? Because they did put like, they were very good about putting notes and stuff on the boards this time.
Yes, we do have photos of them.
All right, is that something we could receive as well? Or is that out of the goals of the process you're looking at?
Is that possible?
Yeah, I think we can make, try to make copies of those and provide that information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's my report. If I forgot something, I hope someone from CPAG sends me an email because there were a lot of other discussions, but like, those are the salient points that kind of stood out to me.
All right. Anything else from staff? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, Director's Report.
All right. I'll keep it brief. Just wanted to reiterate this Thursday. And Planning Commission has a work session with City Council where you'll present your draft work plan to the City Council accomplishments for 2023. And Chair Batista has volunteered to give that presentation.
I don't know if I say volunteer.
I, I winked at you. Unfortunately, I won't be there due to a family thing, but I know that Chair Batista has been to many of these and would like to have as many Planning Commission members in attendance as a support system as possible for, for that. I believe Planning Commission is the second group. All the boards and commissions report that same evening on what they're up to as well in front of the City Council.
That changes from year to year, because a lot of years, it's, it hasn't been all the groups on, on the same night, so.
Yeah, I think that, that depending on the agendas, but the council likes to kind of hear from all the boards to get an update. Kind of use that as a work session. So I would say maybe not every time, but that's what, how they like to have it presented. So we're actually able to do that this time. So they'll be hearing from folks. I'm in the process of going before City Council with doing a update on development review as well. Tentatively scheduled for April, I will present that to you folks as well on a Planning Commission evening. We've, we've had a few staffing issues come along. We took over code compliance that was in the police department into CED about four weeks ago. And so we're working on policies and procedures of putting those in place and how we move forward. And we also have vacancies for those positions now. So we're looking to restart that program and get it going in CED. So we're working on that as well. Last Thursday evening, Council approved some changes to our development fees. So that's for engineering, land use, and building fees. Those hadn't been updated for a couple of years. So historically, they've taken a look at fees once a year. We were waiting with implementing the new software, permitting software, and seeing what the Washington Code Council did for requirements this year, which are just getting put into place this month and some other things we held off so we could have better information in order to do a more thorough review of what fees we could decrease. We have things called trust accounts where you put up a certain amount of money for a review and then extra money in case the review time goes over. We're trying to eliminate some of those trust accounts so people don't have to put so much money upfront and also to minimize and streamline the permitting process. So we're trying to always look for ways to make it more conducive, particularly for smaller permits, local homeowners, that they can get through the permitting process with ease, a little bit more ease versus a larger project coming through that needs more, more review time. With the open house, just wanted to add, there will be food, there will be childcare provided as well. So just trying to reach out and making sure that everybody can try to come. And we realize it's at a time where people like to eat dinner as well. So just trying to make it as easy as possible for people to participate if they can join us and comment on what we have going on and hearing from all those voices, so.
That was March 26?
26, from 6:00 to 8:00. And we'll give you some more information on that as well, so. so. And with that, that's all I have to share, unless anybody has any questions about...
TIP?
TIP's ongoing.
Okay.
We're getting information for transportation plan to fear impairs, and so that's moving along. As far as I know, we're, we have a meeting next week, next week?
Did, did council just vote on something transportation-related?
Um, yeah, the, I think they voted on the capital projects.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, yeah.
CIP.
Yeah.
Again, the acronym's mixed.
Five-year, what, what major projects are, is a city trying to undertake. Of course, Biggie is trying to get Main Street Phase Two funded and completed.
So historically, and maybe not so much in the last few years, Planning Commission usually gets briefed on fee proposals and CIP stuff. Sometimes we provide input, sometimes it's just informative. Would it be possible to throw that on one of these nights where we actually have a little bit of space?
Okay.
Just, just, I know, yeah, just, you know, just to go over, I mean, at this point, you know, it's already gone to council, and they voted on it, but it just, it's, it's good to, you know, kind of keep us, you know, in the loop on, on some of those things.
Okay. I didn't realize fees ever came into the Planning Commission, but yeah, we can see if...
I mean, at the end of the day, we, you know, they would say, hey, this is what we're proposing, and we would all kind of nod our heads and say, oh, that's great. Or we would maybe ask why, and we say, oh, well, it's market conditions, and we find that we're, you know, it's costing X, Y, and Z, and we're only charging A, B, and C, and so we need to break even, et cetera, et cetera. And we're like, oh, good job, you know, but it's, we obviously recognize it's council, who's the one who says yea or nay, so...
Okay.
But definitely with the CIP, it's, it's good to kind of keep, keep abreast of what, you know, kind of what's in the pipeline, and especially when you see changes from year to year. In fact, we used to get the sort of economic outlook as well, and you could definitely see the differences in the budget and the type of hits that it would take when certain businesses shut down, like when the CompUSA closed.
Sure.
Who knew, I mean, I had no idea that it was breaking in that much in terms of sales tax revenue, and that next year, it, oof, wow.
Yeah, yeah, it makes a difference. I also wanted to bring up that the bus loop is anticipated to open at Light Rail Station at the end of this month. So just the bus loop, that the station won't be open, but the buses will be routed through the parking lot and through the loop at the end of this month. So we're doing some last-minute, making sure that access ways are taken care of, even if it's temporarily, and that certain things are in place, signaling is sufficient for the buses, et cetera. So that will be happening, and then we'll be working on getting the Light Rail Station up and completed. Looks like fall of this year sometime.
And there was an agreement with Sound Transit, the city, and the developer about doing that?
The trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's been in the works for quite a while. So the development where the interim parking lot is, is a development called Candela, mixed-use, multi-story development, commercial on the bottom, residential. They purchased that property where that interim parking lot is, so they have permits waiting for them to pick up. They've been through the land use process and have building and development permits ready to pull. But the trail portion for Sound Transit is actually located on that Candela property. And so there's an agreement to have the trail not open when the Light Rail Station opens in order to facilitate the development of the Candela project, and then have the trail open up after that time, so...
I know, especially during the last Town Center update process, you know, that there was discussions about some sort of connection on sort of, I guess, the west, the north side of that property that would sandwich between the, whatever new development happened there in the park itself. Is there any kind of connection there as well, or is it just...
No, there's no connection there. I mean, there's still...
We talked a lot about it during...
Yeah, there's still an easement there. If you, I mean, you can go out there and see like the elevation difference between...
Yeah, that's quite, it's significant.
So yeah, there wasn't anything that was required or put in place. As far as that goes, there is the trail connection on the west side of that property, which will tie into the trail improvements that are being made on Veterans Park right now.
When do those trail improvements finalize? Is that '27?
I'm not sure. I mean, it's, do you recall when the actual improvements are all completed? They're doing Phase Two proposal coming up, in which they'll improve the play area, picnic shelter, restroom, that's park. What am I missing? Kind of a walking trail around there in addition to the other improvements that were recently permitted, land use-wise through us, for improvements along the trail that go through the park, that will connect to that trail through the Maelstrom property, and then with access to the Light Rail Station, and then the pedestrian plaza across the street, which is adjacent to Terrace Station. So lots of big doings, a lot of projects in the works, just trying to get them all done. So at some point, it will all be connected, and it will be glorious, and I look forward to that day, along with a lot of other people that have not been able to utilize those things for quite a while now.
I desperately miss the path through Veterans to the train station.
Yes.
Is construction then substantially complete on the train station, or, and they're just running?
I wouldn't say that. It depends on your opinion, but we have a list of conditional use permit, things that need to be done, and of course, conditions associated with the civil permitting of making sure that all those things are done. So they're on the downhill slide, but there are a lot of permits to close out, a lot of inspections, and multiple sites. The way that Sound Transit was permitted, we had multiple sites throughout the city, so it comes as kind of a package deal.
Okay, so how many emails am I sending about blocked pedestrian access?
Keep sending them, because I had that conversation today, and things got changed around. So that stuff actually makes me furious. So if that thing is blocked or not cleared, please let me know.
I will.
Because I'm happy to be a...
I do.
I passed it Friday, and it was blocked, and today, someone made sure that it was not blocked anymore. So, yeah. There should be a clear, accessible path to the Light Rail Station at all times, period. And when we're routing people out into the street, it's not acceptable. So, or that people don't have some type of legitimate access, where it's not like they're tripping over stuff to get to where they need to. So if you see that, or anybody else, I'm more than happy to be the sounding horn at the city.
Sort of on that same topic down there, I've noticed that the, just east of the Light Rail Station itself, the median still kind of has those round sort of construction barrels, and the pavement isn't leveled. Do we know how long that's going to remain like that?
That's in the process right now of, of getting taken care of through civil review, so that should be soon.
Okay.
Of where that stuff is taken care of.
I just, I don't know if you, like, why, why weren't they able to just pave that? I mean, the rest of it got paved, and so it's just...
When, when they did the original engineering on the Light Rail Station was before 236th, and so some of the engineering didn't match up like it should have matched up. So, yeah.
Every time I drive by that, I'm, you know, because I'm trying not to encroach on the other lane.
Yeah.
Don't hit the barrel.
Yeah.
Don't wreck a car.
I know, it's kind of like, ah, shimmy through there, and yeah, for sure. So, you know, those are the things, there's, there's quite a few things. I mean, overall, it looks like, oh, wow. But, you know, it's all the little details and all the other little things that need to be done and make, make sure, because you get one chance, and then they're on to the next. So just making sure we get all that stuff taken care of.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff? Double-checking with our online members. Nope, not hearing or seeing anything. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven then, miscellaneous business by call, Planning Commission. Does anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any known absences coming up? Nope, nope. All right, not hearing or seeing anything. So with that, I'll go ahead and clear this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.